Hey everybody, welcome to another edition of the weekly work session with Get Oiling. We've got most of the team here today, me, hi, I'm Greg, if you haven't met me before. Got Amanda and Julie and Jessica and Colin and our co-star Macy there too, hanging out on Colin's lap. So hey everybody, we're so glad you're here today. We've got some exciting stuff to share. Coach Ashley is out again this week, but she'll, I believe, return next week as the host of this wonderful weekly work session. So as you're coming in, go ahead and drop a comment in the chat, like where are you coming from? How is summer for you? Hot? Is it not so hot? Is it great? So we've been having a wonderful summer here. So it's been been nice to get outside a little bit and you probably noticed that I'm slightly more tan than I am in January. So one of those things. And today we're doing a, I'll be doing a training on creating a custom website. You probably saw the email if you're here. Going through a couple of new page templates that we have and starting off with a bit of like how it all hooks together. Like what is the purpose of it? Not just showing you like, well, here's where you click to do this, but like, what are the elements of a custom website? What are the important pieces, some of the factors to consider? And then giving you a couple of easy buttons, which is always the fun part, because then you can get something up and going in just a few minutes. And do do the other work later as it makes more sense. So without further ado here, I'm going to share my screen and get on to my slides. You know, many of you, this, this topic came out from, a lot of people have been asking or having, we've been having lots of questions like, how do I create my custom site? You know, because they've, people have learned about like, well, it's, it's better to do, you know, to build a custom site. Because of some reasons and whatever that they've heard, and I'll go through some of that here to kind of help you out and explain what that is all about and how you can do that. And then just, you know, provide these templates to make it easy, it's sort of a templated approach to being able to get something done. Now, just a quick point of clarification, of course, Get Oiling does come with some built-in website themes and that is essentially sort of a, I'll set up my video here too, because I think it makes the screen share a little bit bigger. Whoops, that was the wrong button. Let me try that again. I stopped sharing instead of shutting up my video. There we go. Okay. So Get Oiling does come with built-in website templates. I mean, probably seen these, you know, you can, you can fill them out, they're nice. This is like the ultimate easy button. You get this instantly, the moment that you sign up with Get Oiling. You'll get a website that you can use. If you want to take it to the next level and you don't have to, you don't have to do any of this. But for those of you who want to go down this road, because maybe you want to express your personal brand a bit more to attract different, you know, certain type of people to your business, or maybe you have another kind of adjacent business that you're, you're running alongside your oils business that you want to combine into one. Get Oiling is a great platform for you, a great personal branding platform that you can use to help grow your businesses. So without anything else, I'm going to hop into the slides here. So we've got, you know, slides today and creating a custom website. So what is, you know, why, why, the one first question that kind of comes to mind for me is like, well, why build a custom website? And it does help you attract the people you're, you're really meant to work with and those that you're most likely able to help. And those that are also interested in probably the same things that you are, because you're offering up part of who you are there. So here's a question about like, you know, what's behind the why, like, you know, since the young living products you're selling are really kind of the same as the next person. I mean, anyone can go on there and shop, like, why would they buy through you instead of somebody else? Or since many of you are also, you know, have other businesses that run alongside this, like a coaching business, for example, like, why would they choose you instead of some other coach or some other person in your field? And, and that's where your personal brand comes in on your website. You know, you can attract the right leads with your personal brand. People come to you and they see your site and they connect with you because I mean, you're unique. You know, they're attracted to who you are based on what you're putting out there. What you have to offer really is special and your life experience is really unlike anyone else's. Any website can help attract the people who are in alignment with you. And this is part of what's called your personal brand. A lot of training about that, some of these keywords like personal brand, you can Google that and find more information. Do more research on that if you'd like to. So the, the next part about a website is like, one of the goals is to be able to get leads. Like, one of the mistakes that people will make at the website is that they just put stuff up there. And it's like, here's, here's lots of things and contact me, please. And while that, you know, can work, depending on what you're offering and kind of your level of fame, if you will, the, there's a really kind of a better way to do that, like to get leads. So, you know, and when you're sharing your unique perspective and you build a website around it, that can help bring in more leads to your business. In case you're not familiar with the term, a lead is a real, is a person who's expressed interest in what you have to offer. And your website through Get Oiling can let you collect their name and email address. And then you have also then the permission to follow up with them, which is great, you know, whether it's by email, text, phone call, whatever you want to do, depending on what your offers are and even like, you know, booking a call, that sort of thing. And it might, it's pretty obvious, but like a steady flow of leads are important for growing your business over time. You know, people drop off for whatever reason, you know, as you're growing your team, you're going to have to find some people to replace those that have dropped off over time or as you're growing your business, you know, depending on your type of business, if it's a one-time payment thing, you'll need a steady flow of leads. So leads are important for a variety of reasons for your business. And, you know, how can your website help you get leads? One of the most common ways is to offer what some people call a freebie to help give a steady stream of new leads for your business. And that's more often called, in the marketing world anyway, a freebie is often called a lead magnet. I've probably heard that term before, you know. And I think this term came about, just, and this is me just sort of guessing at the origin of the word lead magnet. But I believe it's because the right lead magnet will pull people to you. It'll pull the right people to you like a magnet. So like selectively pulls the people that you want to attract to your business. Lead magnets should speak directly to the person that you're looking to attract. So you want to write down the attributes of that person. And these attributes is another term for this marketing term called persona. If you want to go deeper on this, you can do some research on marketing persona examples. And you'll see like tons and tons of search results about how to build a persona, there's forms, people you can fill out. But one important thing is to give your persona a name, because then you can speak to it like, you know, you're writing your lead magnet as if you're speaking to that person. So that's one step you can take when you're creating this lead magnet, which will is designed to bring in new leads for your business. There's a whole bunch of different ideas for lead magnets, and these are just a few. I've seen checklists with or website blog posts or whatever that have more than doesn't, you know, double this number. But like, it can be a download, a PDF guide to something. Maybe it's access to an online course or some training by email. Or it could be access to some exclusive resources you have. We have a social media group like on Facebook or maybe you got a vault on your website. You could give them a free consultation, a short consultation, depending on what you're doing. Maybe you've got a video training library or some product samples, you know, that might be a case where you have to charge a little money or something. But it doesn't all have to be free necessarily. Lead magnets could be low-cost offers. They could be templates, you know, like maybe you've got a Canva template for something that your target customer is looking to do. You know, maybe they got a form for a specific purpose. Free trial for something, whatever that might be, a checklist, anything, you know, really anything creative you can think of that you could offer people. And do some online research, there's a ton of great ideas about there, about what you can, what you can do. And here's just a few examples of some lead magnet names that you could use on your website. You know, maybe three steps to radiant skin if you're into skincare and that's the type of person that you're looking to attract. Or beginner's guide to self-care, or maybe you're like a coach that does, you know, business coaching of some sort like, well, maybe your guide is called 20 days to 20% more customers, or maybe it's, maybe that's a video or email series, homeschooling mastery checklist. So those are just, you know, a few examples to get the juices flowing there. But that'll give you some ideas to get started with that. And there's another aspect that's kind of often overlooked. It's called positioning in the marketing world, like when you're creating your, while you're creating your website, your lead magnet in your campaign, there is what's called positioning. And it's, it's really defining how you're the best at something that your persona cares a lot about. I'll give you some examples here too. So like, are you the Louis Vuitton or the Kohl's or the Panda Express or the Tesla or the Tony Robbins of what you do? And, you know, if you think about each of those companies or people, like they all, there are certain attributes come to mind. You know, like high-end or affordable, or you know, there's just different, different aspects that come to your mind about those. And so that's where positioning comes in, you know, like how are your products and services priced? For those who you want to attract, what are they drawn to? You know, are the, is your persona somebody that can, you know, is more of the, the Tesla or the Kohl's? Or, you know, it's just like trying to figure that out in terms of what you're offering for people. And it really helps people understand what you offer relative to what they know about. So here's an interesting example, like with food particularly. I mean, let's say that you invented a cake and this is just kind of an out there example. But let's say you built a cake you can eat with your hands. It could be, you know, you could call it a cake on a stick. If you think about that, like people would be like a cake and a stick. What does that mean? Like, is it the whole round cake? Is it a square cake? What kind of stick is it? Is it a straw? Is it the stick that I found from a tree? You know, it's just kind of all these different things. But if you position it as like a cake lollipop, then suddenly people know, oh, it has a stick, it's probably round. Maybe it's got some sprinkles on there. And it probably is pretty appetizing. So that's just one example of food. Another example might be, you know, are you, are you positioning yourself as somebody who just sells young living products to anyone who will buy them? Or are you, and this is an example, like a holistic health coach serving the needs of moms with teenagers, very specific. So to get your positioning dialed in, you'll attract even more of your ideal leads. So going back to kind of the big picture here, so you've got your, your homepage that has a, you know, download my guide or whatever that you're doing to get your, your lead magnet. Once they do that, Get Oiling can automatically follow up by email or text with a campaign. And really a campaign is just a series of emails and/or texts, depending on how you set it up, sent to your lead over time after they sign up for your lead magnet. The, the purpose of this is to encourage them, people to engage with you more. You know, whether that's offering them other lead magnets or maybe, you know, all the way to offering them something to purchase and kind of moving them up. You know, the, to being a customer. So there's all sorts of different things you can do to get them to engage more with campaigns over time. And there's a lot of other training on this out available too. So campaigns, they do save you time in following up with leads, but you know, be sure to engage personally when it makes sense. You know, if you, if you're not getting a lot of these and you get a lead coming in, it couldn't, it can't hurt to reach out if it makes sense, if it feels right. And then if you're writing your campaign messages to, you know, please encourage people to reply, you know, you've probably seen that in some of our emails. It'd be like hit reply and let us know, put that right in there. The, the message in the campaign is another marketing term here is called marketing copy or just copy for short. Sometimes you'll hear us say that. The term also applies to messaging on your website. We do, Ashley did a great training on this called a campaign masterclass. If you go searching on our YouTube channel on writing effective campaigns and kind of getting into that. I think there's also a copywriting course or a copywriting one, if you search for that term too. So that's, that's helpful there. So putting this all together, like here's the kind of the path that people go through. They land on your homepage, they read a little bit about it, they decide they like it. They download your lead magnet is kind of the next step. And then after that, the campaign sent automatically. And then the campaign messages kind of drip on them over time. And you've got other interaction, like if you choose to, for example, reach out to them or call them or send them a text or whatever, kind of one-off welcoming them or whatever that you choose to do, depending on what, what you have there. So that's kind of the big picture of how this all fits together. And I'll go over the key elements of a website here and, and, you know, showing you how to get your personal brand online and kind of the easy button here that I have coming up here. So key elements of a website that are often overlooked. So like, it's very important to have a single, if possible, and strong call to action, which is just simply like, hey, do this thing, which is like a lead magnet, get my lead magnet. It's written just for the people that you're looking to attract. You want that specific language written for those who like you, who you'd like to attract. And it's also ideal to have a kind of a short headline at the top that tells how you can help the visitor. This gets their attention right away. If you talk about you too much, they'll be like, hmm, I'm just going to move on. But if you, I mean, I think I've heard this term, this phrase before, like people are pretty selfish. They visit their website, like how can this person help me? Or what can I benefit from this? If you frame it from that point of mind and thinking about that ideal client, that persona that you had from earlier here in the presentation, that can really help you dial in what your, what you would want to put on there. Phrasing this so maybe a little bit different way, so here's some other elements or, you know, kind of a different way of looking at the elements of a homepage. So you want to pitch some sort of transformation, like what are the people getting? Like, how is the visitor's life transformed in some way with what you have to offer? You know, does it make their life easier? Will they make more money? Will they be happier? Well, you know, just all sorts of different ways that a person can be transformed. The, the lead magnet, you want to have some sort of call to action for that lead magnet, give them a simple, easy step to move forward with the lead magnet. It's pretty low commitment, put in their name, email address, and they'll get this download. That's really all they have to do is trade their email for this information, this valuable information that you have to offer them. And then it's also useful to have some details about what you offer lower on the page. And then again, have the one strong call to action on the page, and it can be multiple times. That, when I say one, I don't mean just like one button. And throughout the page, like there is one thing that you can do when you go to this page. And so here's like the key elements of an about page. This was different than the homepage, but like when you have an about page, of course, you want to have your story and your photo, important. We also want to have that call to action too, like the same call to action should be, or I mean, you can use a different one if you want to. But the easy, the easier approach is to use the same call to action, the lead magnet that you do on your homepage. This is something that people often overlook on an about page is having also that same call to action there too. So that when they've gone deeper, they're actually more interested or interested enough to go download or, you know, read through the whole thing, they maybe get to the bottom and they go to your about page, they want to learn more about you. You want to reiterate that same call to action on the about page too. So, and if you're at this point and you're like wondering how to put this, put this all together and it seems like a lot of work. Fortunately, there's an easy button. We've recently released a couple of new page templates, calling the Jenna templates, just naming them after random people essentially. That will help, you know, essentially is a template that combines all these things together, all these key elements on a couple of pages. So you can get a template put together pretty easily. So here's some screenshots of these, I'll show you these here in a little bit when I start demoing what the site looks like and how to make this. But here's like the, the template homepage, you can see that the person's photo, it could be a picture of a product, whatever. But here's the strong call to action, a little bit of details in a button. This is the top of the page, like the first thing they see. And then kind of what you'll learn, and there's a little bit more, I'll show you this in a, in a little bit when we get into the homepage. The about page is similar, kind of a headline up here. And then here's the text and it's actually cut off here, but there is a call to action on the about page as well, that I can show you too. As you can see, they kind of tie together in terms of visual design. Of course, you can customize the colors if you're not into the black and white thing, you can customize those to your brand colors. As well. So the steps of actually like setting this up in your system and your Get Oiling site is, I don't have, we have that listed out here. You want to create or choose your lead magnet, create your homepage, create your about page, set up your website menu. And then make sure to set your new page as the homepage of your site. And then, you know, once it's done, you want to keep an eye on it. You want to share it with people like, you know, on social or, or whatever that, you know, if you have an email list, you can share it that way. You can test, but be sure to, you know, like test and revise, like as you see it, as people give you feedback, as you reach out to people. You know, you can make tweaks to just kind of optimize it over time. And if you don't have a lead magnet, here's another easy button for you, because I know lead, lead magnets can be a lot of writing. So we have our content partners like Workspace and Simple Grace Co. have a lot of content that could be used as a lead magnet. I know there's, there's probably others, if you go, go to, I believe it's GetOiling.com/marketplace, there's a list of content partners. And they have, you know, research them, they all have different content that you could very easily use. For example, you could pull in a product sway, let's say you had a Ningxia product sway from Grow Workspace. You could pull that in and that could be actually be the lead magnet. And if you search our YouTube channel, we actually do have a training on that from a while ago where I believe we showed you how to set up a quick, you know, funnel essentially, or I guess it's a word I haven't used here yet. But set up your lead magnet as the Ningxia, as the Ningxia sway. So that's another easy button for you. So between the page templates and the content partners, this is a great way to get something up and going in a very short amount of time, if you haven't done that already. And if you've, if you already have a custom site, maybe this can help you refine it a little bit and kind of dial in a little bit more. Before I demo this, there's some exciting features that I'll also show you. We have probably the biggest one is the custom forum fields for lead capture on the page builder. Essentially what this means is you can replace, you don't need another forums tool, like a, you know, Google form or maybe a Woofoo or, or type form for simple forums. This is a really powerful feature, you can collect up to, I think it's 50 fields at a time on your, on your lead capture page inside the page builder, which, you know, this can be great for, let's say if you're a coach, you could have a client intake form. Or if you're looking for, if, if you have a situation where you want to know if somebody's already a customer with Young Living with somebody else, you can ask that question. There's just all sorts of possibilities with that. And there's some page builder improvements, I'll be showing you along the way, because I'm using the page builder. And then there's also a custom page, not found page. I haven't posted this in the announcements channel yet, but we'll be, I'll show you that too. And this, this case is like when, when somebody has stumbled across a broken link on your site, like maybe there's an old link or, or they just mistype something, whatever, it can go now to, previously we'd go to your homepage, but now you can specify like a custom page for that. So I will show that to you. So here, I'm going to go ahead and demo this. If there's any questions along the way, let's see. Okay. So there were a couple of questions, just taking a Q and A here. Suzie asks, when it says a website visitor, is that me or somebody else? I'm referring to like somebody else, like somebody that you shared your site with, maybe you posted it on Facebook, that sort of thing. And somebody clicks on there and they visit your site, that would be what that is, what that is about. Kimberly asks, please mention the last site you mentioned where you can incorporate a product sway, Grow Workspace. They have, they have some, you know, product sways, I believe, if you go to their website for GrowWorkspace.com or I think you can, because GetOiling.com/crow is another link that will get you there, G R O. So they have lots of sways you can download with and all sorts of topics, which make for awesome lead magnets and kind of the easy button approach there. So, all right, with, with that here, kind of out of the way, I'm going to pop over and demo this. So I have a demo account here that I really haven't done much with. And see I'm using the stock, this is the built-in, I believe this is the Body Systems website theme. And it's just kind of the standard theme and I want to go make a custom site and I want to use one of these new themes of surround tab. I want to use one of these new themes that we've put together for you. So the easy, easy way to do that is come to the dashboard, you can click on design or sorry, create and then create webpage. Alternatively, if you like, you can go down to my site settings and then click on custom pages that will also get you here to the same place. So once you're here, go ahead and click create page. And the two new templates are right here. I mean, these have been here for a couple of weeks, so you've probably seen them on the list if you've created a page lately. But they are here and so I'm going to go ahead and click on the Jenna template homepage. And this has kind of all the elements that I was talking about. You know, the photo and the call to action, we've got the headlines here, the photos that you can swap out, kind of a description more. And, you know, the call to action, and it's got some other things in here too. So I'll show you a little bit about the editing, the page builder is pretty straightforward, for those of you who haven't seen it. If you want to swap out the headline, you can click on here and change it to be whatever you'd like, you know, I'm not, I'll do something super creative, like change the number, but just click on that. You can, I mean, if you want to, you can add images, videos, that, that sort of thing. Like if you'd like, for example, if you don't want this to be a photo, you could just go ahead and delete it. Click on it, maybe insert a video instead. You know, so anyway, I think I deleted that, but that's not obviously something that maybe you'd like to do there. But so you can edit the page, there's been a few little changes with the page editor. There was the, there was like this half moon icon that was confusing to some people. So we changed it to this pencil icon, so you can edit the sections setting. So like, if you want to change the background color, which is probably a pretty common thing with this specific template. You can click on that and then click a color and maybe, I don't know, I'll just sort of pick something else here. Maybe there's kind of this dark red, you can do that, customize the background. Let's say you don't like that button color, click on the button. You can click on the style and I'll pick a different one, maybe that's the one you like better, for example. And you can, you basically customize the look and feel of this pretty simply. You can move sections up and down, like if you want this one to move up, for example, you can pull that one up or I'll move it back down. And so this, you know, design away however you'd like to here. And so once you're done with it, you know, designing the page. And so a couple of other things with the page editor, if you'd like to add more content to it, you're not stuck with what's just here in the template. As you hover here, you can see there's like these little plus signs that should go up, or you can click the add button. And what that'll do is allow you to add content in between sections. So let's say I want to add a, just, you know, put something plain, you know, like a two column, narrow first column. I want to put that in here. So that popped a new section in here. I can easily come in here and maybe swap out the image. Let's say we want to add a design from Canva, this is something we covered a few weeks ago. You could totally do that, clicking on here and let's say it's a, I don't know, email header or Facebook ad might be the right size actually. I open that up, you can bring this in, pull up Canva. You know, I'll just send this over when I'm done, you can edit it here in Canva, this is Canva. It'll prepare your design and then it'll insert it right into your image gallery in Get Oiling, which is really nice. And then it'll just pop it right in there and you can see now we've got this new image in there. So it's super simple to do this, makes it really easy to, you know, create the content on the homepage that you like. Once you've got that set up, the other area to look at is your lead capture. So that's all done on the same page, there's this settings button here now. So click settings, of course, I want to give this a name. I want to call this my, my example homepage or whatever. This name isn't shown to people, what is shown to people is what's the so-called this title bar text. And what the title bar text is, you can see this up here where it says add page, Get Oiling, that's where that's going to show. So since this is my demo account, I'm going to say John L. I won't, and you probably want to, you know, give something along the lines of like what it is that you do, what are people searching for more? So because title bar is rated highly in Google. So put some marketing keywords in here, if you will, make it sound good. Let's say I'll just go with something simple like holistic health coach. And then the link path here doesn't matter a whole lot for your homepage, but I'll just make it, I'll just leave it as my example homepage, it doesn't really matter. There's a few of the things you can do here when you're editing. And then you can see, for those of you who have been familiar with this page editor, it's changed a little bit. We do have tabs now, instead of those sort of collapse sections, so that these are a little bit easier to navigate. And there's a few things you can change here, like this sharing image is what appears on social media. So you want to put a nice image on there, otherwise Facebook will randomly choose a photo from your, from your page. Give it a little sharing description that also shows on Facebook. And here is a little description, like if it shows up in a search engine. But what we're looking for mostly here is the lead captures, kind of going back to building the page. So the lead capture box, this section's been reformatted a little, a little bit. Basically, you can put in your lead capture headline, your lead capture message. This should be whatever it is that you're offering. You can choose to show the lead capture box automatically under certain conditions too. These here, like if they try to leave the page, I'll turn that one on just to show you how that looks. And here's the form fields. I'll demo this a little bit more later, but this is where you could, for example, if you wanted to add another field, you could and put that in here. I'll just delete that for now. And then you should tell it what's going to happen after they register. So you want to choose the campaign that you had set up here and you can search for that, say, I'll just choose that one. You can tag people automatically, which is really nice, like you could say this is my homepage lead. So you know where they came from. And then optionally, if you're, you know, doing more advanced stuff, you can add them to vaults or run certain automations, that sort of thing. And then importantly, like where do they go after they register? Do they stay on this page? You know, if it's for some reason, then you know, they have to go get the campaign, wait for the campaign email, you could do that. Or you could send them to a page on your site. Let's say you want to send them to a different page, but you know, like a thank you page, you could make a thank you page if you wanted to after they register. Or some specific URL, like this would be a case where, let's say you had a sway, you could put the URL of the sway in there. Just paste that right in there and then that would send it automatically. So that's the lead capture and I'll, I'll save all this and show you how this works. So I'm going to save this page and then view it. And you can see here, it's got this long URL, my example homepage, actually it popped up the box, let me, let me not do that for now. So here's the site or the pages, I've created it, all shows here. And it's got some footer stuff on here from the site template, but normally it ends right here. As you can see, I like tried to mouse out of the screen and it pops up that box, because I have it set so that this lead capture box fills up automatically when they As you can see, I like tried to mouse out of the screen and it pops up that box because I have it set so that this lead capture box fills up automatically when they try to move away. And here's where the fields show up. This is that message that shows up for them. And you can see you've got the. The call to action and everything here as well. So name, email, phone, they do it and they're in, they'll start getting your campaign, which is really cool. So now you can see like this is my homepage previously going over here, you know, refreshing it. If I want to make this the homepage of my site, super simple. Next to the settings button is this little dropdown. Just click this little link that says make this my site homepage. So if you click on that. And then, you know, I'll give you a little, you know, are you sure sort of thing? If you set it as a homepage, it'll do that. And then now if I come back over here. And view this, it won't be this page. It'll be the new page that I have set up. So that's really easy to change your homepage when you're editing it. And a great way to, you know, customize that landing page when people show up there. Now. I'll show you also the about page. I'll make that and I'll like connect it to the menu and show that how all that works. So. I want to add another page. So what I'll do is I'll click back here on pages. And then click create and I'll show you what the about template looks like. And we'll connect that up with the other one that I already made. But let's say I'm going to change the section background color again, and I don't remember what color it was. It was sort of reddish. I think, but I'll just pretend that's the right color here. Change that to match the other color that I have there. You can, again, you can click here to change the headline and the text and that sort of thing. Write your story here, but then down here is where you can have your call to action again. And this wasn't, you know, this wasn't showing on the screenshot earlier, but this is important to have this because. What this will do is link to your. Your lead capture box. And how you can do that, anytime that you have a link, there's another way instead of. You know, just under settings, under under leads, you can, of course, have it automatically pop up. But if you want it to pop up like on a button. Like on this watch pre workshop now button. What you can do is link to hashtag lead. Now here's another change that we've made to make this even easier. For a lot of people remembering the different hashtags is. It's, you know, something that doesn't come easily. So now there's a little button here that lets you choose the link. That the link, the button's actually been there and it shows all of your pages, but. What's new is that there's a way to put the the lead capture and the contact me box in without having to remember the tags. So all you have to do is click that little magnifying glass and then click on the lead. It'll put lead in there and then you can change the button. On or the text on the button. And then it's good to go. And so that will automatically open up the lead capture box. I'll come in here for settings as well. And I'll just say, you know, my example about page. And I'll leave that alone. This would be again, I probably put in here, John L. Holistic Health Coach about me or something like that, or maybe something a little bit more. Targeted to what people are looking for. I'll leave this alone. You can see this, this template actually has the same offer in here. So you can easily swap that out. Have the same fields. Make sure to set up the same campaign and tags. I think I did the homepage lead in here. So I'll do that as well. And then I will save and view this. And so here it is. The page is on there. Now, the question is, how do you get that connected? That's where editing the menu comes in. So like right now, this new page that I made doesn't show up anywhere. It's not in the menu. It doesn't automatically show up there. So let me click. Here and I'll go back to the pages list. And there is a edit site menu here. You can also get this, get to this from the dashboard or from from under my site settings. But if you click to edit my site menu. This has a lot of stuff in here. So what I'm going to do actually is just kind of. Delete all of this for now, work my way up and start from a blank slate. So we can see what all. This has to offer. So. If this is the first time you've done this, this is probably what it looks like. This is no, no menu items. You can click to add some common menu items. So like blog, contact me, opportunity, place an order, those sort of things. So I'm going to like delete the opportunity. And maybe the, I'll just leave, yeah, you can, you can reorder them too, if you like, but what I'm going to do now is add a one. Actually, I'll probably reorganize this a little bit. So. What I'm going to do is just, I'll delete all these here and I'm going to, I'll leave blog. And then I'm going to have like, I'll make a menu header and I'll call it about. And then within that menu header, I'm going to add a menu item. That links to a website page. Called about me. And that was, I think, the my example, my example about page. And I'll show that under my about menu header. And then hit done. And then I would also. Actually, that's probably all I need there. So I was just going to show you, showing you how to add a menu, a dropdown menu item. So what I'll do is I'll save this now. Let me close that. I think this is the right one. So I'll refresh the page. You can see this is what was here before. There are a bunch of different dropdown menu items. Right now we've simplified it down to blog and about and about has one little item under there. And if you click on that. Then that pulls up that about page that I was just. Working on. So you can see. That you can connect that up pretty easily and get that set up within a few minutes. If you use this. Template or any of the other templates that are there, or if you have your own ideas, you can certainly put it together as well. So that's how you get the. Menu and the page setup. Now there's a few other things I'll show you in terms of like. Customizing this site that are often in common questions that come up like. How do I change the, you know, this little icon here right next to right there? I've got this little, I don't know, I think it's like a peppermint leaf or something like that right next to here. And so how do you change that on your site? And that is under this customize my site. This is another screen that's recently been. Refreshed. I think we covered this a few weeks ago on a weekly work session. But under customize my site, you can choose like what. What appears at the top, like right now, this is considered, this spot here is considered a website header. You can either have it text, which is just is now, it says John L., or you can have a logo image and you can choose your logo image from your library. Let's say, I don't know, this is. Probably not a lot of great examples. I'll just. I'll just grab the get oiling logo here for now. And what that'll do, once I save it is appear over here. So go ahead and save the changes there. And then kind of refresh and then you'll see that the website header shows up there in place of the name. So you can put the, put a logo there if you like. If you'd also like to change this little. Leaf thing here and by default, I think it's a an oil drop, but. You can choose that site icon, just click there and then scroll through and find the image that you want to use. I'll leave it as this leaf, but once you change that, then that would also. Show up. Here and update by default, it is this little drop to get oiling drop. So. A few other little tidbits while we're on here, you can choose your homepage. If you want a different homepage and you decide. Yeah, that's not for me. I want to pick a different one. You can do that here. All of your, there's a bunch of different options. You can choose from one of the built in website themes. You can choose your blog. You can choose any of your custom pages as well here. So you can pick from any of those as your homepage. And then. You can choose a site footer, like often if you don't want to use the built in one, you can create your own footer. And then here's the new feature I was telling you about the page not found four oh four page. Sometimes it's called this four oh four page. If you're. Have been into the internet world for a while, that can be the other name for it. But this is what happens if you visit a page that is not. And so I'm going to, what I'll do is I'll set this to my example about page. And what this will do is normally, you know, if somebody visits a page in your site that doesn't exist. I'll just make up some URL. What that's going to do is bump them over to the page I chose, which was the about page. Instead of it'll go, you know, by default, it goes to your homepage. But if you want something customized, you can do that there. So that's new. That's been a long time requested feature from people. There's some other things you can do here for customization too. If you want to customize the built in website theme, by all means you can. And this this applies to that. Just to those website themes. You can put your social media sites in here and this shows up under your contact me. You can set up fonts. There are, you know, we have the thousand or so Google fonts that come free with Google. You can use any of these or you can actually upload your own custom fonts. If you want that as well. And there's some advanced options here for cookie notice and plugging in third party tools and that sort of thing. While I'm thinking of it, I do want to show you one more thing. A very common question is, can I have a custom homepage? Like this. Now I hook on my logo and it's got my custom homepage on there. Can I have that? And also use some of the built in website themes. Yes, you can. You can do that through the menu. So what I'll do is I'll click on my site settings and then site menu. And I'll just add another menu item here. So if I click on that and I'll add, you can choose what type of thing that you want to put in the menu. And all sorts of different options, just a link, a label, a blog post. But what I'm looking for here. Is I want to link to the built in get oiling website theme. And then it gives you the choice, like which theme do you want to show in which country? So like if I want to choose, I don't know, the healthy homes US theme. I can call this maybe healthy living or something like that. And I'll put that under my about. So hit done and save. And now if I come over here and refresh again, the about menu is going to have this healthy living link in here, which will then pull up the. The healthy home website theme that we have on here. So that's a very, another very common request I wanted to touch on. So. With that, let's see, let me pause here for for Q and A. Allison asks, you can add videos now. Has that changed from adding the YouTube link? Videos that we've been able to add videos to the page editor for quite some time. We currently don't upload videos. Don't allow uploads. You do have to put those on, for example, a up to YouTube or Vimeo, depending on what you're looking for. So I'm going to search for the word example because I think that was the name here. So I'm going to go back to my homepage. And show you that, like if you wanted this. Workshop, let's say you want to put a video here instead, you can delete that. Put in, you know, click in here to a video, pick a URL, whatever, and it'll insert it in there. So. You can go ahead and do that with a link. Yes, for the page setting tab, how does that link to Facebook? That's a great question. So go under settings here. And so I think that's probably these two sections here. So like sharing image, whenever you share something to Facebook. There is an image that shows up typically like, and when I share, I mean, share something like a link. So you paste a link to your website, landing page, homepage, whatever. You can have that here. So choose the sharing image that will show up when this page is shared and the sharing description shows. Alongside the photo too. So I believe it shows your title bar at the top is kind of the bold headline in Facebook. It'll have the image and then I'll have the sharing description. Yeah, that's a good question. So we've another question here from Allison. What is the default campaign and send a campaign after the lead registers? So let me go back to that use default campaign. If you actually just click the pencil here, it'll take you there. There's a general settings here where. You can choose. What campaign is sent by default. And this, the system comes with one called the new prospects campaign. And sends out, I think, six emails over the course of a week or two. That you can, you can make a copy of it and customize if you'd like. So for example, you hit edit campaign. It'll open up that campaign. You can make a copy of it here and then edit it if you like, or you can write your. Something else. This is another pretty common question, like. How do I prevent this from happening? You can come here, which is also, if you don't want to go through the way I did, if you come out of contact settings. And general settings. There's, you can, this is where you can choose your default campaign. So let's say you wrote a new one. You could just choose that one and then hit save and that will change the default campaign for every, everything on your site. And. There's one, there's actually a built in one that's pretty common called the new prospects acknowledgement. This is a nice one because it really only has one message in it. That says, thank you. And it says, thanks for reaching out to me. If you ask me a question, I'll get back to you. And so that's a really good one. If you don't want something to drip out, but you want people to get something in return. If you haven't written a lead magnet. So there are some done for you options as well here in the campaign front, if you don't want to use, or if you don't want to write your own right away too. Somebody, Dan asks, can the size of the exit pop up be changed smaller, maybe vertical? Right now it's not customizable. That's a good. Good wishlist item. It's always the same width right now. There would be a way, you know, that could be something we can add to our wishlist. Uh, let's see here. Now let's ask, is there would have bulk changed the title of our page if you want it to be the same throughout your website? Is it the best practice to have it all the same? I would say it should follow a pattern. You can see like. With what we're doing with get oiling is we have sort of what it is right away. And then the name afterwards. So like. In this case, I went with, you know, John L. Holistic Health Coach. But you could go, you could also flip it around and because. You know, depending on the type of person you are, if you're like me. You'll end up with a bunch of tabs and as you add more tabs, this gets smaller and smaller and smaller. So you can really only see the stuff on the words on the left. So keep that in mind, like what's on the left is probably going to be seen more than the one on the right. So the pattern I'd recommend is like the page that you're on and then, you know, like your name and there's a little separator bar here too. There isn't a way to bulk change across multiple pages, but if every page is a slightly different title, which is, I think, a good idea because that really is helpful for. Search engines, then then, yeah, you'd want to edit each page anyway. Uh, let's see here. So Australia asks, when editing the site menu, it changes on your custom page. And young living template page, is there a way to avoid that? The menu changes throughout. It changes on your whole site. So like this top bar. Will change throughout your whole site. If you want to have a different menu on different pages, what you can do here, I'll show you this little trick. You come back over to the page tab. You can actually turn off the header and the menu. And what that'll do, I'll do that here. I'll show you. I'll turn it back on in a minute, but. What that'll do is it completely hides this top bar. So then you can add another section. On your page that is effectively the menu, if you wanted something different there. So what I'll, I'll. Turn this back on here though, so we have the header and the menu on this page. If you're talking about the, I know the the young living template page, the built in website theme actually has like a learn menu attached to it as well. And that's. Theme specific. So that's why it only shows up on that one page. And there's a way to turn that off as well if you want. Um, let's see here. So the other thing before, there's a few more questions here, but I wanted to jump in and and demo a little bit the form creator now. So now that we've seen kind of this lead pop up and how that works, this one only has the three fields in there. But I'll show you some of the cool things you can do now with it. If you go under leads. And scroll down a little bit, lead capture form fields. I showed you this a bit, a little bit ago. But now you can add fields. You can even reorder fields. So like if you have, you know, one request we've had from people is I want their name and email to be at the very end. So you can do that now and say, let's say, let's make phone go completely away. So let's ask him a few questions here, like, you know, how. Not coming up with any ideas here, but let's say, are you already a young living customer? You could make this a required field, for example. And now you can even on your custom fields, you can actually change the type. So it can be a short text, which is what you see here. Where it's just the text box like this. You can make it a long text, which is more of a paragraph. They can hit, you know, hit return and make multiple lines. You can even make a dropdown list. A list or, you know, pick one list or pick multiple. And these are all kind of, these three are very similar. So I'll show you what the differences. Between them. So I'm going to make a dropdown list where you can pick one. And then just click the edit list here. And then I'll add an item. I'll say yes. And no. And hit save. So that's the dropdown list. So I'm going to add another one here. I'll call this the pick one list is just an example. And I'll make this, this one. And add item one. Item two. Item three and save. And then I'll do the pick multiple, just to show you what that looks like as well. So this form field is a pretty exciting thing. I mean, just the client intake forums. Asking people to write questions. This all goes into your contact manager when somebody registers. So you have that information on file. A lot of people would have, they would have a this get oiling page that asks them name and email, take them to like this big woofu form or something like that, that has twenty questions on it. And then then I have to get back to get oiling. Whatever that might be. This lets you do this all in between. There are still some cases, you know, some of the forms products out there do offer some sophisticated features that aren't here, but this covers, I think. The majority of the basic cases. So I'm going to add some items here. In the multi select. And I'll show you what that looks like. Okay, so now I have this, maybe I'll just reorder these all to the top. Got name, email, phone is hidden. You can see this is the visibility here. And then I will go ahead and save it. And now let me refresh this page and we'll show you how this little pop up has changed. So now. Now we have our, are you already a young living customer? You have your yes or no. So this is the, this is what's called the, let me go back to the settings here. This is what's called the dropdown list, the pick one. And then you have. The list where it shows all the items. So they just have to click on the radio button. So this is probably good if you want to keep your form a little more visually compact. If you've got a. A dropdown list that has fifteen items in there, maybe that you want to, you know, have a list like that. And here's your multi select. People can choose one or more here. So those are just the different options of fields. And you can see they're ordered in the way that. I specified, so this is a great way to incorporate forms into your lead capture process. Maybe this is a step down the road. I'm just thinking kind of big picture here. This probably isn't something. Um, just thinking kind of big picture here. This probably isn't something like if it's for a lead magnet, I don't think you really want to like. Ask them 50 questions before they um. You know, before they download their lead magnet. That's something you want to keep simple, but like, once they've gone a step past that, you know, like maybe you offer them a survey like, hey. Can you fill out this free survey? I'll give you my free guy, you know, some free guide to XYZ. If you fill this out, get more information about them. Um, that's where this forum speech would come in. And again, that comes to you by email and it'll show up in your contact manager. If you ever want to um, do that later. So. So that's the forms feature. That's the other pretty cool, exciting thing I wanted to show you today. Um, with that, I can pop back over to the Q and A here. Uh, let's see, Dana asks. I don't see my exit pop up in my mobile version. Uh, how do I activate that? Um, that should be there. Um. As far as like the unmobile, this, when they try to leave the page, that may not be triggered in all cases on mobile. So that might be a good case where you trigger it based on a scrolling percentage, like if they hit 50% of the page. Um. Six, you know, or a timer or something like that. So. That's something that is possible. The other one, of course, is just to have a button like this watch free workshop here. Where you can hook it up to have the uh, lead capture box, or maybe you want the contact me box, um, depending on that, on what you're looking for. Uh, so we have another question here. Does the choosing font? So Allison asked, does the choosing fonts work with basic? That's a really good point. Uh, I should have covered that earlier. Um, let me save here my changes. Some of these are not available on uh, the basic plan. So when you come on to customize my site. With the basic plan, some of these will say you'll need to upgrade. We do actually offer a branding package add on that adds most of these branding features for you without having to upgrade to premium. So that's something interested in, reach out to support at get oiling.com and we can. Help you get hooked up. If you want to see, um, you know, some of these cool features like the fonts, I believe is one of those that comes with that, that lets you customize your fonts throughout the site. Uh, Dana asks, this is a while ago, so I don't remember, sorry, uh, what type of third party links I'm referring to? If you want to put your. Um, question back in there, maybe give, give me a little more details on that. I can help out with that. Uh, let's see. So Shelley asks, are we able to link specific bundles to purchase like in my YL? Uh, so we covered this, I think it was last week, uh, or recently here, but if you go to our YouTube channel. We have one of our recent videos. Uh, that was two weeks ago. Uh, how to create bundles in get oiling. And what I can do is put this link in the chat. And yep, let me see here. So this is, I think, the right one. So this is. Oh, no. Oh, yeah. I think that is the abbreviated version. If you want to see the whole version, let me put this link in here too. I think we made a shorter version of that. Um, but these two. Are in the chat. We did a training on the best way to get um, bundles into your site um, like that. So thanks, Shelley, for that question. Let's see here, uh, looking for website page builder questions here. Is there a way for the lead capture form to ask if the person prefers email or text? You can ask that question. Uh, that's a really good wishlist item to maybe make that a different, a, a new type of field. For that, um, let me go back to the page editor here. To make that a new type of, of field, uh, right now, you could ask them that question, but you would have to go manually set that up. So like, if I would. If I would um. Add the field here. You could ask them the question, like maybe this dropdown list, you know, they prefer email or text, you could do that here. Um. That sort of thing. So you could, you could do that. But again, you'd have to manually connect that once, um, once that's done. And maybe, you know, that's something you could throw a tag on, you know, like if you're emailing to people with a specific tag or or not. Um, let's see here. Next question, if they use one of these new forums and choose email or text, can you add an automation that changes that in the contact? Um, not right now. That's another really awesome wishlist idea, though. We'll get that on there. Um, okay. And is there a way to send specific campaign based on the answers in the lead capture? Another really great idea. Um. Put that on our wishlist as well. But really appreciate the feedback. These are really awesome questions uh, coming in here. So. This uh, makes, makes the product better. That would be a pretty cool thing to be able to, you know, trigger certain actions based on the answers that they've chosen. So. Um, we'll definitely. Put that under consideration. It's a really cool idea. Okay, so there's a few other questions here that are unrelated. And hopefully this is helpful today with the uh. The homepage design, kind of the marketing philosophy and some of the explanation of the foundations of of marketing terms. Uh, so I'm going to hop over here. There's some questions that are. Not related to um, the, the page builder that I can see. Um, oh, okay. One quick question that came in, Dana asks, could the lead capture questionnaire page be sent to customers for evaluations? Yeah, you can use it for whatever purpose you want. This doesn't have to be just in your homepage. Some people will create a form, uh, you know, for whatever purpose, so like, you know, an evaluation. Form for customers. Yeah, you can put your questions in there. Uh, and use that, just send in the link to the page, they'll fill it out and then uh, you'll get the questions answered. Um, right in your inbox and your contact manager. Uh, let's see. Lots of questions coming in. So, okay, so going back up to Kimberly asked a question about blogging quick. So I'll pop over to blogging. We do actually have, one of the questions was, how do you, do you have a video with tips on blogging? And yes, we do. If you click over on the help icon uh, and search for, I believe, it's just blogging, um. Is it, uh, oh, yeah, the first one right here. What should I read about on my blog, blogging strategy? We did a weekly work session on that. You can watch this video here. Um, so yeah, that's a, a great one there. We have lots of tips there. To respond to blog comments, I don't know if this account has any on here, but what you do, it's pretty simple. Go over to blog post and click on the manage link. And there's a manage comments link. You click on that, um, there'll be some comments here and you can just hit reply. Type your reply, hit reply, it'll uh, automatically show up on your website then um, to reply to the comments. So that's how you do that. Holly asks, is there a way to, to check spam score for email subject lines, et cetera, like hot words that. Like free that might send us spam. I know there's some services out there that will do this. Um, you know, you can do like emails, you know, just search for things like email spam. Score or email spam checker, uh, deliverability, email deliverability tool or something like that. And. And you'll end up with, um, there's a lot of sites out there that will, you can paste in your content of your email. It'll give you a score um, based on that. So you can kind of improve that. Uh. Kind of a related question, I guess, to that. Uh, Joel asks, when my campaigns send emails, they typically go to the Gmail's updates folder. Um. And. Is there a way to change that? So goes their inbox that, I mean. If there was a reliable way of doing that, I think marketers around the world would rejoice at that. But Gmail uh, decides based on. Whatever algorithms they choose, what folders, what emails go into. And so that's why, um, so if you actually search for, there's another help article here. Heart, help article here. He's just search for spam, but if there's this article called tips to improve email and text delivery. You can inside of your um. Inside of your first campaign email or even on the page. A kind of a thank you page after they register. You can uh, ask people to take some certain actions, like if they have Gmail, for example. Um, you know, if it happened to arrive in spam, click the not spam button, start the message, market is important, drag it to primary. If enough people do that with their emails, they'll recognize Gmail will start recognizing that and these other providers will do that too. They'll start recognizing it as content that's valuable and. Be more likely to inbox it. But for specific people, you can make, you know, if you ask them to take those actions like on a thank you page. Then it should go to their inbox every time um, going forward. The unsubscribe link really is, um, because these are primarily marketing emails there. It is a requirement um, to have that. It's just kind of a safety. Safety system. If you're on the. Premium or higher plan, there is a way to customize that email footer as well. I believe that's under contact settings and general settings. There's a. Kind of a way. Oops, I actually have to click on it. Um. Where you can change your email footer. So that it's um, a little bit different. It has your opt out link in it and that, and that sort of thing, but there's always going to be unsubscribe at the bottom. It's just a safety. Mechanism to help all of our, our, our messages be delivered. Uh, let's see here. How can we use the custom page with fields to update info from downline prefer email or text? You could, um, you can use the forums for really any purpose that you like. You know, if we're going back to my, I'll just search for my example homepage and pull that up again. You can put whatever questions that you want to in there. Right now, the only ones, um, the only ones that are connected to anything are name, email and phone. Otherwise, the rest of them kind of just go into your contact manager. Um, but if you have a relatively low volume of this sort of thing, of people filling that out. Then once you get the lead, it'll have, the email will have a link to the contact in there. And so then you can go do whatever it is that you'd like, like. You know, if they prefer email or text, you could have the appropriate tag, that sort of thing. Um, it's a, it's a manual process right now, but I think that's, you know, there's been some great suggestions here today. Thank you for. Um. You know, potentially automating some of that if it would go down that road in the future. Uh, let's see here. Is it too much to have an email signature and email footer for all emails? No, I don't. I, I think that's pretty common. The email signature should be like your name and, you know, maybe your photo, if you want to include that. Uh, email address, website. Just basic contact information, probably a little bit about what you do and maybe some of what you offer. So that would be an email signature. The email footer is actually a, a little bit different. I don't have an example in front of me, but really what that's meant for is the. Um, you know, there's some legal requirements, especially if you send in the USA, there's this law called the CAN SPAM ACT. Where, um, you know, it requires you to have your, you know, your business name or your name and then uh, you know, a physical mailing address and a way to opt out. That's what the email footer really is. Um, so it's really, I think, good practice to have both of those. Email signature is totally optional. If you want to be a bit more casual and maybe make it look a little bit more. Um, like a personal email. Going back to Joel's question a little bit, one idea that I've seen. People do to make that unsubscribe slide down a little bit is when you're creating an email, just put some. Empty line return or, you know, hit return a few times. On the keyboard, it'll put some space down there and it'll make it scroll up page and be a little less visible, but it'll still be there. For legal compliance. Um, so a couple more questions here. Uh, Lori asks, is there any plan to make the lead capture fields available within the website page instead of going to a pop up? That is a wishlist item that we have. Now here's a little tip for you. If you. Just want the lead capture form to open up automatically, uh, let me go to maybe the about page here. I'll show you. Pull about page. Let me pop over to here quick. I'll view this. And you can see like, you know, we've got the, the lead capture pop up. I don't have it set up to trigger when I leave, but if I push the watch button now, it'll open up. So let's say you have a form that you want to send to somebody and you want that pop, capture box to show up right away. If you put hashtag lead on the end of it. Um, and actually only will work if I refresh it, it'll open up the box right away. When they visit, they won't have to click. So that's a little, a little tip. Uh, you can create a custom page, for example, that really has nothing on it, except maybe a button that opens up this box. And then um, put the hashtag lead on there when you give the, give them the URL and then it'll open up um, lead capture right away. Uh, let's see here. Another question. Is there a way to add an image to the lessons within a vault? I want to make the vault more appealing. Um, not currently, that is another wishlist item um, for us as well. There are, there is a way within a vault to add photos for the vaults themselves. Um, so that's, you know, another, another level would be going to the, the lessons and, and other content too, but that's something where. Is on our wishlist here too. Uh, let's see here, is the Kim, Kimberly asks, is there a video playlist starting at a recommended step one, step two, et cetera, for newbies? I didn't see one on the YouTube channel. That's uh, a really great question. I believe we do have a help article. Under getting started here called, I'm new, what do I do now? That walks you through some of these resources. Um, there are some additional options here and we actually have had, um, I think there are a couple getting started. Sessions on YouTube that we have. And then the getting, there is this, another um, help article called the simplest way to get started with get oiling. And that's actually a weekly work session. Clip. Um, this is another really good one for kind of a getting started. You're looking for that. Um, generally though, there is this setup progress bar here. Is something that you can uh, use to get started. Click on each one of these. And it'll show you how to do it and you can mark the step done. Uh, from there. So that's um. A great way to get that done. Again, there's the, there's the help article down here. Another way of stepping through things um, that some people prefer. We've got, we have this set up in different ways, you know, like the, the help article. Uh, are typically more written than video. This bar is short little videos for the setup bar. And we also have guided tours. So if you click on this help button. It'll pop up a little question here. You know, do you want to browse the help library or would you like a guided tour? And the guided tour is it pops up this little box, um, where it'll walk you through kind of an overview of the system step by step. On how to do these um. These different things. There's more tours available now. You can hide the list. But what this will do is like, if you want to send an email. You click on that, it shows you how to go through it step by step. Like here's where you click. If all of the instructions, um, you know, hit filters if you want to. Click actions, click mail. So this guided tour. Um. Is really a great way, and I will hide this list for now. A really a great way to get started if you want that step by step in terms of like what the system does and how to navigate through it. So. Those are a few different resources for newbies. Um, but generally speaking, I. I'd recommend, uh, you know, just, you can share the built in site. If you want to create a custom website. Follow today's training. That's a great way to, uh, you know, get a site up and going. You don't even need an about page if you don't want to. You could just do the homepage. Plug in some content from a provider, a content creator, like maybe grow workspace. For a lead magnet, you can have a website set up within a, a few minutes. Once you've kind of um, narrowed down who it is that you're looking to target. So. Awesome. Cool. Well, I know you've, this has been a, a packed session here, but um, I think that's it for the questions. So I'm going to. Pop back on here and uh. Say thank you. Hopefully this was helpful and um, it's been, been great spending time with you. If you have any. Questions, as always, please, you know, reach out to support at get oiling.com. If you don't have a good oiling system yet. Um, you know, come to get oiling.com, uh, click sign up and you'll, we'll be able to get you going. Um. It's just a dollar for your first month if you haven't actually signed up yet. So really. Low commitment, uh, and, and you can get started with all these amazing tools under one roof, um. For one low price. So thank you, everybody, uh, and we'll um, see you next week.